Go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, April 25, 2022. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Commissioner Alguín, would you like to introduce our pledge group this morning?
Yes, thank you, Caesar. Good morning, everyone. I am very, very proud to introduce Mrs. Duran's first grade class from Mission Ridge Elementary School. They will be leading us in the pledge this morning. And I am very happy to see that they received their copy of the My County Works coloring book that we sent to them. Thank you all, I'm glad to see you have it with you. So this is something I want to thank our communications team here at the county for providing these coloring books that we're going to be sending to all of the students that participate in reciting the pledge for the Commissioners' Court, so that they get to learn more about their county government. So thank you all for being here with us this morning, and we are ready to start when you are.
Thank you, welcome. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free, public, democratic, social, information, under God, and the principle that liberty and justice for all are the highest and greatest principles. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the states, to God, and to the people of this world.
Thank you for that, great job. Can we have an applause for these young... And thank you, Commissioner Alguín, as always, having these groups really makes it a lot better, starting on Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Betty, maybe we can have that coloring book assigned to each newly-elected office holder?
Yes, even with a set of crayons.
As a reference for us here.
Next, we'll receive an invocation from Ms. Phyllis Peterson, which join us for justice, the El Paso chapter of Americans United for Separation of Church and State.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We come here today to do the business of local government, the deliberative body that is closest to the people. As we gather, we are reminded that in our differences, there is great strength. We do not all think the same way or believe the same things, yet we are linked by our common humanity and our shared origin. When we work together to move our community forward in a spirit of mutual respect and common decency, we showcase what is best about our community, our state, and our nation. We embrace many traditions. We are Christians, Jews, Muslims, Hindus, Buddhists, humanists, atheists, agnostics, Wiccans, pagans, unaffiliated, uncertain, and so many other things. We are straight, gay, and transgender. We are young and old, and everything in between. We represent dozens of races and nationalities. We run the gamut from liberal to conservative, and some of us are a little bit of both. To be sure, we do not agree about everything. And we often feel fiercely protective of what we do believe. There is great passion in our beliefs, and rightly so. But there is one thing on which we all agree. We share the goal of making our community the best place it can be. We unite here today around that noble aim and common purpose. So be it.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Appreciate your time and being here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, do you have some opening comments for us this morning?
Absolutely. Well, on behalf of myself and our commissioners, we welcome you to Commissioners' Court. And I am so glad, we love a full house, because we do a lot of government things that impact each one of you and your families and friends and parents. And so we're very glad that you're able to see a little bit of what happens at Commissioners' Court from one end of the county to the other. Also, just want to recognize, Wally, just got to meet your daughter at the Children's Hospital. And what an amazing young lady. And her love she has for you. And I know you're about to go on a little bit of a journey and have some challenges. But, you know, we love you, we're just so glad that you're here today with us and that we wish the best for you. Thank you very much, Judge, appreciate it. So today, as you could see, we have a lot of young people, and it really very attributes to our first resolution that we're going to be making on behalf of Commissioner Stout. And then we're going to go into public comment, and we're going to recognize a great group of students and coaches and an amazing Mr. Sanchez, a great principal at Cathedral. I went to Notre Dame, so I have some special feelings for this group here. So thank you very much, and we'll move forward. Thank you. Caesar? Yes, sir.
Picking up the Children's Hospital, we had a great event there this past weekend. But ladies and gentlemen, you have a county judge that he teaches dance. So if you lack a good dance instructor... The judge was the Energize the Bunny Saturday night. Good job, Judge.
Thank you for that, thank you. Go ahead, Caesar.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is the consent agenda composed of items 3A through 3Y. Are there any items that members of the Court of the Public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners? Move to approve?
Second? Commissioner Alguín?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, I apologize, before you move on, may we have an opportunity to speak about item 3K just for public knowledge? I believe, Judge, you were requesting that we provide a little bit of public information on that item.
Oh, yes, and I do apologize. I thought this item, it's very important that, you know, the community understands how we're moving forward on certain things, especially things having to do with our history and things that are going to promote El Paso and make us a lot better because of these historical sites. So, do you have Valerie or...
We do, we do have Michael or Valerie available online, if you'd like us to just provide a brief...
Yeah, just a brief comment, so you'll know about this very exciting site and what we're trying to accomplish. And so...
Do you mind if we do that now, Judge? Or do you want to go to the resolutions?
No, perfect, we could...
We'll quickly just give an update about what this item includes.
Sure, thank you.
Michael?
Hi, Michael.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's a good Monday and glad to be with you to talk about this item briefly. I also have Valerie Vanessa who worked on the grant that we won just recently. It's $50,000 to help with a master plan for our Casa Ronquillo project. That's something that the county has been investing in for several years now. But the exciting news is this grant will help us have a plan that'll guide the maintenance of the project once it is completed, as well as the operational use of it in terms of making sure that we tell the story of this family in this region correctly and thoroughly. That story will be infused with the public's help. Along this way, we're going to be reaching out to the community through not just our partners there at the San Luis Sadio Genealogy and Historical Society, but also the city of San Luis Sadio. And we're also going to have some public events out there. I think that's really important, not just to help, share the good work that's happening with the county, but making sure that we take into account the stories that come from the community, the families that were there, that lived there for so long. We'll be taking in oral histories, information, and other items that the community can share with us. And I think that's really something to be proud of.
Thank you, Michael. Valerie?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Judge, or good morning, Judge, and thank you again for attending our preliminary site visit a couple of weeks ago to kick the project off. We're truly very excited to... We get asked all the time, especially since breaking ground on Casa Ronquillo's restoration and renovation work, what's going to happen? What are you going to do with this property once it's finished? And the answer is, it's really, truly up to the community. And with this opportunity from the National Endowment for the Humanities and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, we hope to do it justice through the cultural interpretation of the site and re-establishing the garden surrounding. We were very, we'll be releasing a press release to notify the public and invite everyone, and hopefully everyone stays tuned as these different public meetings come up beginning this summer.
Thank you. And of course, very important is that we have a community involvement. So thank you both. And here in our audience, if you have a chance, an opportunity to go to San Luis Sadio, it's got some amazing historical sites and great restaurants. And right behind the church is Casa Ronquillo. Incredible place, got to see the restoration of the adobe. And it's just amazing to go on a really hot day, and it's cool inside that facility. So it's just a great place to go. So we encourage all of you to be there. Valerie, Michael, thank you very much for giving us that information and allowing the community to know that they can be a big part of it.
Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. Okay, Caesar?
Before we move on, sir, I forgot to mention this morning that we're joined by Dario Garcia and Audrey Lopez this morning, our ASL interpreters.
Great job, thank you.
Item number 4A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing April 30, 2022 as Global Youth Service Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Commissioner Stout?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, good morning, everybody. I have the honor of reading this resolution into the record. I want to thank the Juvenile Probation Department for helping us with this. We visited a few months ago my office, and, you know, that visit reinforced really my belief that the JPD works very hard to give many youth, you know, a second chance for them to learn and to deal with the challenges that life presents them and to help them get things back on track. And service projects such as cleanups can be a really great way to show respect for the community. And in this case, the art and classroom components add a lot of depth to the program that will result in something that's really enduring for our community. And so this is one of two resolutions, by the way, that relate to our Crown Drill Azcara de Park. So with that, I'll read the resolution, and then I think we have some folks from some of our community service specialists, I think Joel Olivas and Elizabeth Cervantes are here to speak. So we'll have you all come up. Whereas, today's youth leadership is our hope for the uncertain future. The principles of community service that they learn today will be their values for tomorrow's challenges in our community. And whereas the Juvenile Justice Center, along with community partners, provides an enrichment opportunity to juveniles through community service learning, local youth will be participating in a Global Youth Service Day throughout April and hosting a celebration on Saturday, April 30, 2022. And whereas Global Youth Service Day is the largest youth service and civic action event in the world and the only one that celebrates and builds the capacity of all youth ages 5 to 25 to help our communities and democracy thrive by working together for the common good. This year's Global Youth Service Day project consists of gathering community stakeholders and community members to speak out against violence in the urban and rural areas within the county of El Paso, emphasizing the importance of empathy and unity with the theme "Violence: Breaking the Cycle and Healing." And whereas, young men and women will have the opportunity to express themselves through their art as well as use critical thinking by sharing, inspiring, and creating solutions to prevent hate crimes and violence with activities including innovation, technology, art, and creativity. The Juvenile Justice Center has also partnered with Azcara de Park to pay tribute to the 23 victims at the county's healing garden, donating personalized art created by our youth participants, reminding the community that we are El Paso strong. And whereas, these community participants are made up of youth from the Juvenile Justice Center, working with the fellow community members and various community leaders, such as county and city leaders, official motivators, officers, art teachers, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas, the Juvenile Justice Center staff and participants, Azcara de Park, Project Vida, and Security Next Gen, along with other numerous local community businesses, organizations, and supporters from the community, are honored to support this significant, heartwarming, peace-focused event, Global Youth Service Day. And now therefore be it resolved by El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that April 30, 2022 be designated as Global Youth Service Day in El Paso County, signed this 25th day of April, 2022.
Second?
Commissioner Alguín?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Y'all would like to come and share a few words with us? Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioner?
Good morning.
I'm Joel Olivas, one of the community service specialists there at the Juvenile Probation Department. And thank you for giving us this opportunity, you know, to talk about this amazing event that the stakeholders, along with our community service partners, we've been planning for many weeks and months. Every year, the Juvenile Justice participates in a worldwide event called Global Youth Service Day, GYSZ, in which young people around the world gathers and conduct community service, learning, and other service activities overall to serve and benefit their countries and their communities. Global Youth Service Day is the largest youth service and civic actions, as Commissioner Stout mentioned. Kids from age 5 to 25 gather around their communities, and they celebrate and build the capacity and build community service projects, learning projects. And it's the largest youth service and civic action event in the world, and it only, and the only one that celebrates and builds a capacity of these young fellows that help their communities and democracy thrive by working together for the common good. Now, this year's 2020 Global Youth Service Day, the kids choose to talk about violence and breaking the cycle of it, and also healing, which is part of the whole process. The youth will focus on preventing violence in our community while at the same time emphasizing the importance of empathy, as the resolution said. Two nonprofits or organizations such as Security Next Gen, Project Vida, have gotten together to present various topics relating violence, racism, and hate crimes, and bullying. These classes have been given to various experts, are given actually by various experts from all over the United States via virtually to our youth from detention, challenge, and probation services. Now, the detention and challenge, they've been working together on various research topics and, of course, relating violence and probation. Also, the youth will be drawing posters on how to prevent violence as a whole. On the probation side, and in the community, youth pending community service hours have given their time on a lot of Saturdays throughout the whole month of October, actually starting March, leading towards October the 30. They've been getting together since every Saturday and have been working on this lotus flower project at the El Paso County Azcara de Park. Now, relating, of course, these 23 petals honoring the memory of the victims that happened almost three years ago. The Juvenile Probation Department and its community service program, various locals, sculptors, artists, and also welders have been working together in helping and instructing the youth on the creation of this lotus flower, which we will see on Saturday. As we've learned, the lotus flower is spiritual, symbolic, and also being revered for its ability to remain untold and pure despite its moody and murky environment, despite of the situations we experience as a community. And we maintain a strong, and we believe in healing and combating and breaking anything that will want us to bring us down. Now, once again, for your continued support and sponsoring the resolution on behalf of the Juvenile Probation Department and the community... on behalf of the Juvenile Probation Department and the community service, we thank you. And I want to introduce part of our committee. I'm sorry, some of the committees were not able to make it, but you will see them on Saturday, which all of you are invited.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your support and the continued support of Global Youth Service Day and the Juvenile Probation Department. As my partner Joel mentioned, it does take almost a village, right, to put on these events? So, we wanted to thank our partners. We wanted to thank Askara de, Project Vida, and Security Next Gen. In Security Next Gen, they brought nationwide speakers to speak to the kids as part of their community service learning, where they talked about topics of violence, and they were able to engage with the speakers and really take ownership of their accountability as community members in breaking the cycles and realizing that just because it's been a certain way for so long doesn't mean that it needs to continue. So, we're very proud of the amount of insight that they were able to provide as well to our speakers and as well as in their posters, which will be exhibited at the International Museum of Art for 30 days. So, you're also invited to see their work there. They are very talented, and we are very proud of them. So, again, thank you for this opportunity and your continued support.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Valerie? I'm sorry. Yeah, you're going to be... No? Veronica? You're okay. Well, no, I just want to thank you. You know, the beginning of my career was being a juvenile probation officer. And you know, when you do something for you, they respond a lot quicker, and recidivism goes down, and you get them back on track when it's earlier than when you have to deal with them as adults, and then you have a lot of different challenges. And I just want to encourage all these young people here today that you're fortunate, you're very blessed, success is obvious. But reach out. Reach out to those young people that don't have that level of success. And I can tell you that whatever you do for them, you're doing for yourself because you'll understand and appreciate, have a deep appreciation for how people struggle and what they go through. Our youth are so important. You know, I think we used to pay a little bit more of attention, and youth sort of now wait until they get to be adults, and then they figure that they're going to start doing something at that point. But that's not the case. You start now. You start now, reaching out and helping others, and especially with the value systems that are presented to you at Cathedral and the type of leadership that you have and coaches. There's a lot of people out there that need mentors. And we have found that because pandemic was so prevalent that we don't have the services. You know, we try to get people into mental health and get them into therapists, and there's not sufficient. And we know that the only way that we're going to be able to address the outcome and collateral impact of the pandemic is going to be through peer helping, peer counseling, and mentoring amongst everyone that can possibly do that. So, this particular resolution, thank you, Commissioner Stout, because it's so timely. It's just amazing what the timeliness of what we need to do in our community and in our society. So, thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Commissioner Stout.
I think Commissioner...
I'm sorry.
...wanted to speak.
Commissioner Alguín?
Thank you, Judge. Now, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Joel and all of the staff at JPD for all of the amazing work that you all do with the young people that are served by JPD. We had the opportunity to receive their assistance during our Easter egg hunts last month, and it was just wonderful having them there and seeing just what a tremendous difference JPD is making in their lives. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and all of the staff there at JPD.
Well, thank you all once again, Joel and Elizabeth, and of course Veronica Myers, who I think there's like 10 of you, because I don't know, like, you're everywhere doing great things for our community and your work through our Parks Department. So, really appreciate y'all helping us bring this to light and encourage so many members in our community to partake in these events. And I think that it's a great idea to start early with teaching kids about community service and how important it is to give back. You know, many of us are so lucky to have had the opportunity to do so, and it's one of the most gratifying experiences that a human being can ever feel is giving back to one's community and helping others. So, thank you all very much for providing that opportunity.
Thank you for using our symbol, which we carry with us, the lotus and what it represents. And that also encourages that people understand the healing garden and the importance of that it's something for transformational purposes, more so than just a memorial, but a place that'll help you move forward. And so, thank you for that. It really helps our healing garden process. Thank you. Caesar?
Y'all want to come up and...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Take a picture real quick?
Caesar?
Sir, we'll take item number five, Public Comment, next. Judge?
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure. I will be presenting after we do get the resolution here next week. And then, I'll be going to, when I have an opportunity, go and present the official resolution to all of you there at your school. But I want to start off, just like I said, thanking you for this success. We constantly need to put El Paso on the map. We have other things that sort of hurt our image and things that happen that are really not that truthful and that the perception of who we are. We're very isolated from the whole Texas and Austin and San Antonio. And typically, they're the ones that win all the awards or they sort of get the lion's share of a lot of things. But when you get state recognition, it gets El Paso back on the map, and people start asking who El Paso is. And then, I've always said to Noah's is to love us, and so, they have to know us first. And so, I thank you for being here today. And I'd like to have the coaches. I'd like to have Mr. Sanchez, first of all, if you could come up and tell us a little bit about, and then introduce your coaches and how the coaches come up as well. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Alguín, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Stout, and Commissioner Robinson. It's good to see you guys again. Thank you, first of all, for honoring Cathedral High School and our accomplishments. We are very thankful that you're honoring us. Two state championships this year, back-to-back, so our kids have worked very, very hard. Before I introduce our coaches, and they'll introduce their individual athletes, I want to recognize the man that really makes everything happen. He makes sure our athletes are passing their classes. He makes sure that they're traveling well, that they're fed. And he does a real good job, just been there, been there. He's a Cathedral alum, gone back and given back to his community. Mr. Carlos Puertas, if you could stand up for him. We don't have an official assistant athletic director, but if there were one, it would be probably Carlos's right hand. Andres Ramos is a senior, is going to graduate this year. He's going to be a big loss. But whenever we can't find Carlos, we go to Andres, and Andres does a real good job. Andres, will you please stand up, please?
Thank you.
I'd like to start off by introducing our two swim coaches, and they will introduce their athletes, okay? I want you to know that the swim team practices about 5:30 in the morning here at Admiho. And I went out there a couple of days and swam with them. And it's how they get up at 5:00 and how the parents get up at 5:00 and get them there by 5:30, I don't know. And then, they go to school all day, and then they go to practice after school. You know, so they're amazing athletes and very dedicated people. And a state championship shows a lot about it, tells a lot about them, okay? So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Calvin Zieseldorf and Coach Miguel Cardenas. Will you please come up?
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. Let me first introduce my assistant coach, Coach Miguel Cardenas. He really came in about a quarter after or like halfway through the season, and he really brought in a new energy onto the deck, and he really took the younger guys under his wing. So, I really just want to say thank you to Coach Miguel Cardenas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us.
Thank you.
A bunch of gentlemen we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to talk about the swim team real quick. Every year, we are put under an extreme amount of stress. And I want to congratulate these guys for handling it very well every year. You know, we come from a history of, I think it was 32-plus straight state championships. We lost two years in a row, and then we won these last two years through commitment and effort, which is all I require from these guys. They just need to show up and put the effort. And I think, as we all know, when you show up and you start the effort, the effort just kind of snowballs, and you just keep going. And they definitely learned that this year. And I think we gave Principal Sanchez a break. His practice was at 5:30, ours was at 5:00. So, these guys were up a lot earlier.
Just to be clear.
Just to be clear, yeah. I'm not sure if these guys were going to walk around and shake everybody's hands, so I'll just have them stand up.
Yeah, well, let's get the tennis coach also, and that way, we'll do everybody together.
Okay. Let me just introduce them real quick then.
Oh, absolutely.
And they can just stand up, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, and they'll be coming up here with us.
Thanks to the parents. The parents have been wonderful. They're an integral part of what we do.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you to the parents. If I can just have, well, I'll just introduce them real quick. Freshman Alfonso Ruiz Del Hoyo, just stand up. We have state member Galo Rodarte. We have freshman state member Ian Ramirez Aizawa. State member Sebastian Navarro. Freshman Arturo Limas. And freshman Mauricio Aguirre. Now, with the sophomores, we have state member Mauricio Escobar Orvera. We have state member sophomore Sebastian Aguilar Colomo. Perdón, I'm sorry, Aguilar Colomo. We have sophomore state member Narig Idenian. Sophomore Mark Brady. Sophomore Dante Granados, excuse me. We have sophomore Diego Young. And state member, juniors Emilio Reyes Gonzalez. State member junior Sebastian Machado. Junior Pablo Raposo. Junior Esteban Vélez. Junior and state member Emmanuel Raposo. State member, senior and team captain Eli Vialva. Senior state member and team co-captain Javier Terrazas. Senior and state member Bobby Rodriguez. State member Fernando Pérez. And senior. And last, senior and state member Christopher Rodriguez. Thank you so much, and I'll pass it on to the tennis coach.
How you figured to do it that orderly? I'm just like wondering how that happened. Everybody...
I had them sit in their classes, and then I took their pictures, so it was all nice and warm. Thank you.
Great discipline.
I appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
I'd like to now introduce Coach Setiel Acosta and his assistant, Mateo Cisneros. They are the coaches for the tennis team.
Excellent.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge.
Good morning.
We want to thank you for this great recognition of the boys' hard work, effort, dedication, and of course, these two state titles. So, we're really grateful for giving us the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
Coach Mateo will introduce to you all the tennis team.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll go by the lineup that we set up for state. Singles one, Isaac Raval. Our doubles one, Emilio Ceballos. Fernando Garte. Our singles two was Marco González. And our doubles number two was Raúl Inojos. And Sebastián Borrego.
Well, thank you so much. And like I said, once we recognize youth and we let people know what they're capable of doing when there's discipline and people like yourself. And you mentioned the parents, and sometimes we forget the behind-the-scenes and everything that they have to do. And that's what helps us to have better, stronger children. And so, we actually have a resolution that focuses on parenting and some of the challenges that parents have to go through to make it happen. So, over and above, we thank you and recognize the parents as well. So, once again, thank you all, and we'd love to have you come close over here. We could take a picture with all of you. Thank you.
Caesar, are we ready for continuation?
Yes, sir. Ms. Keller, did you have something to add?
I was just promoting to our audience members that the county is also hiring for lifeguards, and so I did share that with the parents who were the most interested, and the kids. Thank you, Caesar.
What a great place to recruit, huh?
Veronica helped me with the reminder, because she started as a lifeguard, and so there's bright futures ahead.
Yeah, worked as a lifeguard at Washington Park, so it's a great job.[1520.43][1520.43](laughing) Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 4B. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Michael Amaral, who recently retired as Director, El Paso Veterans Affairs Healthcare System.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I do also have the honor of being able to read this resolution and to recognize retired U.S. Army Colonel Michael Amaral. Welcome, Mr. Amaral, thank you very much for being here. After his long tenure with the U.S. Army, Mr. Amaral decided to go on an adventure with the VA and became the VA Director. He was a very, very active, and has been a very, very active member within this community. He also participated on Senator Rodriguez, former Senator Rodriguez's Veterans Advisory Committee. He's worked with our own county veteran advisory board, and has had a presence on many boards and committees around El Paso, such as the Medical Center of the Americas. I've seen him at many of the meetings there. The VA in El Paso serves 60,356 eligible veterans in a service area that encompasses not just El Paso County, but also Culberson, Hudson, Jeff Davis, and Procedio Counties, as well as Donaña County in New Mexico. So I want to just wish you all the best, Mr. Amaral, and I really hope that they find a replacement that's as engaged as you were. There's some big shoes to fill there. But I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then we'll let you say a few words, okay? Whereas retired Colonel Michael Amaral dedicated years of service to realizing the mission of the El Paso Veterans Affairs Healthcare Systems' mission, which is to offer options for timely, quality services for veterans through care and respect for one's physical, psychological, and spiritual health. And whereas Michael Amaral retired as a Director of the El Paso VA on February 26, 2022, fulfilling his promise to serve in this capacity for at least five years, under his leadership, the El Paso VA improved and expanded its services by adding community clinics on the west side and northeast El Paso, and a mental health and sleep center in central El Paso. And whereas his service to the El Paso VA is now among his many accomplishments, which include retiring from the U.S. Army after 30 years of service, Amaral also served as a Chief of Staff at William Beaumont Army Medical Center. And whereas El Paso is now Amaral's home, and he will continue his next chapter in the Borderlands as a client of the El Paso VA, and now therefore be resolved that El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court recognizes and extends our sincere thanks for your service and dedicated leadership, Mr. Amaral, for providing that to our El Paso veteran community. Signed this 25th day of April, 2021.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alguín.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The podium is yours, the mic is yours.[1724.02][1724.02](applause)
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners. I really appreciate all the support you all have given to the veterans in El Paso to make us a veteran-ready community. A lot of veterans end up, like myself, don't want to come to El Paso, but then we come here, we fall in love with it, and we want to stay, and we've got to be ready for those veterans. And you know, my five years, it was my privilege and my honor to have led the El Paso VA, to be part of that team, and we have made some great improvements. We're not perfect, there's nobody perfect out there, but I think changing the culture to one of kindness, and being compassionate and respectful on both sides, us veterans to the staff, as well as the staff to the veterans, and we have really changed the culture up there, and that should surpass any leader that happens to be, you know, have the title of Director at the time. I think we've got a great leadership team up there, we've got 1,200 people who show up to work every day, dedicated to providing great care to our veterans, and I'm going to miss them, I really do miss them. I miss most of our veterans, I'm not going to lie and tell you, I miss them all, but it was really a great opportunity to serve this great city, to give this county the opportunity... to give this county the opportunity to get even more ready to provide care to our veterans. You know, getting the approval for that replacement facility out in the William Beaumont campus is huge and, you know, just another step. I told the staff when I was leaving, I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be your patient. If you don't think I'm going to be coming up here, if I see things slipping, you got another thing coming. But I greatly appreciate the acknowledgement, the recognition, and, you know, it was really my pleasure to do it. So thank you.
Before, some comments. Carl, I know you have some great words for this incredible person.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. First of all, on behalf of the veteran community, we want to say thank you for taking this opportunity to recognize Colonel Retired Mike Amaral. He tried to get out of here quietly, just as any humble leader would. We've been trying to chase him down since February to acknowledge him and give him this resolution. But he's been so busy traveling and drinking beer that he was hard to pin down. But quite honestly, you know, as not only, you know, a partner, a community partner with him, I had the opportunity to serve with Colonel Amaral. We were on the same command team at William Beaumont Army Medical Center. He was the DCA. I was the hospital sergeant major. And from that day till this day, nothing about Colonel Amaral has changed. He has truly, truly, truly been honored, dedicated to our veteran community. And he really minimizes the amount of impact that he had and improvement that he had to that VA Health Clinic. They went through many and many interim leaders, but he went in there and he changed the culture. He changed the entire climate and just took it leaps and miles beyond where it was. So from the veteran community here in the county, we really, really didn't want him to get out of here quietly without thanking him for everything that he'd done for this community. So again, Colonel Amaral, we salute you. And we're just great to call him a friend. Thank you again, Judge.
Colonel, thank you. You know, I had the pleasure of had heard you before you had spoken. And you know, I used to use the word veteran-friendly. And then I heard you say, you know, veteran-ready. And someone said, when you're veteran-friendly, that means you're going to have a cup of coffee and, you know, be nice to veterans. And instead of ready, including everything and all their challenges. And you're such a great partner. We're very honored and blessed that you decided to stay here in El Paso. You know, we lose some great people sometimes to other places. And just knowing that you're going to be here really makes us feel good about what's going to happen to veterans. And, you know, I keep, I'll push it forever of having the Veterans Capitol of the U.S. here in El Paso. And you're one of those highlights that we could pinpoint as to why we should be recognized as such. So once again, we thank you. Commissioner Stout, quite an honor for, and to do this. This is really nice of you to do that. Of course, Commissioner Robinson, our veteran here, our representative here in our Commissioners Court. Go ahead.
Colonel, thank you for your service. Judge, when you say you talk about, one of the challenges we had years ago with the VA was not quality care, which he has improved, but access to care, getting into the system was a challenge years ago. That has significantly improved his work, particularly when you're talking about adding the clinics. One on the west side and one in my neighborhood in northeast where veterans don't have to go all the way up to William Beaumont upon a hill there to get to the VA. Where, so your primary care doctor is closer to you rather than you have to go to him or her all the time. But one of the other improvements, many, is the cell phone. Like I have an appointment. So one of the systems that he's implemented is that I get a notice and reminder of my appointment on my cell phone. So thank you for all you do. There's many things that you have done. And wait a minute, you are a retired officer.
Yes, First Sergeant.
Law has not changed yet. So in your back pocket, you have a recall order, right? You will be recalled.
All right, Commissioner Robinson, I really appreciate it. You know, some of these things that I did, I jokingly say they were selfish. I'm starting to lose my memory, so I need somebody to ping me and let me know I have an appointment. I did, Judge, if I could, I did forget to mention that the reason I was able to do this was because of the support of my wife, Mari. The intent, what we had talked about for years, was that I'm going to retire from the military and we're going to travel. And I asked her if we could put that on hold for five years while I did this. And she accommodated that, supported it. And, you know, and that's why now we're going to be.
She's here with us, huh?
Yes, she is. She's sitting right over there.
Oh, well, come up. You can say a few words about this amazing man. You know him better than we do.
She's going to roast him.
We have a rule here, okay, at Commissioners Court, just a good part, just a good part.
No, Mike has been intimately engaged with the VA and has put heart and soul into it. He wants to make a lasting legacy here and to make it ready for veterans. You know, everything he says is exactly what he means. And we look forward to seeing it carry forward.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you for all the support you needed to give him so he could do what he, he's did a great job that he did. So thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all again. And thank you for your support. And thank you for giving him to us another five years after he retired from the Army. And now y'all can ride off into the sunset. The good thing is you're staying here, so you're going to still have the best sunsets to ride off into. And, you know, send postcards, as I said, as I told Mr. Amaral earlier, send us postcards from all those travel destinations that you get to so that we can live vicariously through y'all as you're enjoying your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Judge, before we end this one, I also just wanted to thank once again my appointee to the Veterans Advisory Board and the Chairwoman of the Advisory Board, Alexis McCray, for making sure that we got this resolution and coordinating everything that we did here this morning. Thank you very much, Alexis.
Didn't realize you were in the audience, so thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Carl, as well. Caesar.
Item number 4C. We do have a correction to read in from the Parks Department as well for the item. Item 4C should read, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing April 29, 2022 as National Arbor Day in El Paso County, Texas. Further pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 81.032, approve and authorize the acceptance of a donation from the Downtown Lions Club of 90 trees to be planted at Ascarate Park.
Okay. Sorry, y'all. I know it's very heavy on my end with the resolutions. This is the last one today. I have the honor of reading as well. As you all know, Ascarate Park is the regional jewel. And, you know, we state that often here from the dais. I'm really proud of the improvements that we've made there in the last, you know, six or seven years. And I'm also excited about the possibilities described in our master plan. We regularly hear from people with ideas about the park, which just goes to show that there is so much interest in what's going on there. And with all that, sometimes just the simple pleasures are the best, right? Ascarate is part of the Rio Grande Flood Plain that provides an oasis in the middle of hundreds of miles of really harsh desert. Trees that provide a little bit of shade to sit under are critical to our park. And I'm very pleased to read this resolution and make a motion to accept the donation of the trees. And I think we have, of course, Veronica Myers here, as well as Susan Driscoll and Denise Rodriguez from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife to speak. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton, Morton, sorry, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in the county increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that April 29, 2022 be known as National Arbor Day. And pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code Section 81.032, approve and authorize the acceptance of a donation of 90 trees from El Paso Downtown Lions Club to be planted throughout Ascarate Park to provide shade and expand on our mission to provide great parks for everyone. Signed this 25th day of April, 2022.
Commissioner Alguín.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Looks like we have Tessa Jimenez to speak with us.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Tessa Jimenez, Special Event Coordinator for the County of El Paso. In celebration of Arbor Day, the Parks and Recreation Department is honored and to continue to promote collaborative and community engagement with other outside agencies. They have the same mission as ours, to promote conservation education. This project will promote resilient, climate-change-ready communities and, again, great parks for everybody. I would like to introduce our partner, Susan Driscoll, President of the El Paso County Downtown Lions Club.
Welcome, Susan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm delighted to be here today. As Tess said, I'm the President of the El Paso Downtown Lions Club. I'm proud to be here. I'm very proud of our club. Next year, we're going to be 100 years old. 100 years old, one of the first. We were the first Lions Club here in El Paso. And we do a lot of great things in our community here. One of them is now planting trees. We planted about 30 trees last year and decided we're going to expand on it this year. We chose Ascarate Park. Excuse my accent on saying that. I can't say the word. I get teased all the time. So anyhow, we're very excited to do this. We have partnered with the Parks Department, Echo El Paso, and Master Gardeners to help us plant the trees. The park is going to dig the holes, thank God. And then they're charged with keeping them alive. God and the Parks Department is going to have to water them and take care of them for us. So just some of the things that our club does. We are asked by Lions International, we're an international organization, to do five major projects every year. And this year, our diabetic project is going to be, we just created a cooking class for kids with diabetes. We're starting the first class to be held here, June 11. Very excited about that, starting up. We're partnering with the Children's Hospital and El Paso Community College to make that happen. The chef is going to be demonstrating and we'll be providing the cooking class to many children at one time because it's going to be online, like a Zoom class. So we're excited about that coming up. Our pediatric cancer project this year, we're going to purchase t-shirts for kids getting oncology treatments or getting chemo treatments. So these special t-shirts have zippers in the neck that allow them to get their chemo in their port. They don't have to take off their shirt. So we're very excited about doing that this year. Our hunger project, we always volunteer at the Kelly Center for Fighting Hunger. And vision project this year, we use our spot autorefractors to go and test vision, do vision screening at the schools and at daycares. So this past week, we did 113 kids at North Luke Elementary School vision testing. Of the 113, 47 were required to go to referrals to the eye doctor. So you never know what we're going to find when we go and do vision tests at the schools and daycares. So Lions, we are knights for the blind. We were asked by Helen Keller in 1923 to, in 1925, to be knights for the blind. And we have done that. We provide eyeglasses, eye exams, and eye surgery throughout El Paso and our district, up to Odessa, Andrews area. And we have a Texas Lions camp. We send kids from this area to the camp. It's a camp for children with disabilities, Down Syndrome, and diabetes. And so from this area, usually about 30 kids. It's on no cost to the families. We provide the transportation there and the kids stay at the camp for a week. Due to the pandemic, we've been sending the whole family unit because they can't be in the tents together and the cabins together. So now we're sending family units. So that's going to continue. It was a new thing that started due to the pandemic, but it's going to continue. This year, we provided transportation for a new male lion to come to the zoo. If you notice, the male lion passed away. And it took over a year for the zoo to find a DNA-compatible male lion so that he could mate, his main job is to mate. And so we're excited to bring him here. They're slowly introducing him to the females. They said if they do it too quickly, the females will kill him. So we got to be careful on that. So.
Flowers.
We have a peace poster contest that we have here in El Paso. And so we have the 11, 12, and 13-year-olds that we ask to be part of the peace poster contest here. It is a club contest. Then it is district, state, and international. The international winner gets a trip to the UN and $5,000. So it starts here in El Paso at the club level. So we provide a float every year to Thanksgiving Day Parade. Our club helps start the parade here in El Paso. The Symbol Association took over the organization of it, but we're the only civic organization that has had a float in the parade every year since the inception of the parade that has been held. And so right now, we're working very hard on that. It's a big job and we really appreciate it. We're really excited about it. So this project that we're having right now with planting the trees, we're very delighted and thrilled to be here today to tell you about it and be recognized for it. And we appreciate it very much. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan. And now we have Denise Rodriguez from Texas AgriLife, Director.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Denise Alcedo Rodriguez, Bureau County Extension Director for Texas A&amp;M AgriLife. I'm very pleased to be here, to be able to provide technical assistance to our county park partners and to be able to plant the specific tree species that we need for our urban desert environment. We all know how important trees may be, but in El Paso, we know that we need those windbreaks in the spring. But we also need those same trees to anchor the soil during our monsoon season. We're also really able to be unique to Texas that when we do stand under a tree during the summertime and there's a breeze, we actually get cooled off. We're not as humid as other places. But ultimately, one of the benefits of trees that we know and recognize is the fact of how they contribute to quality of life, specifically with the communities that we serve. When we're able to bridge natural elements together with people, we have a fond appreciation of that. We're able to also connect that with our wildlife as well. And then we hope that that is an inroad into folks spending more time outside to be able to lead more healthy and active lives as well. So we're very pleased to be able to provide our support with the tree species selection and also the plant. and also the planting. But it just doesn't stop there. We're also committed, along with our certified master gardener volunteers, to look and be stewards of the plants that are going into Escarate to be able to be here for generations to come. So with that, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Veronica?
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm very honored to be able to host Mr. David Wright, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. Mr. Wright oversees all of the urban extension offices in El Paso. So everybody from El Paso all the way to Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, San Antonio, and Fort Bend and Houston. So we're really excited to be able to align a lot of our missions with extension and align those with our urban counterparts throughout the state.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, do you want to come up? What a great partnership. Texas A&amp;M has been such an amazing contributor. Pretty silent sometimes. I think most people don't recognize that. And of course, the Lions Club has been, you know, our foundation here in El Paso. Mr. Wright, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you all for having us here. I actually sort of didn't necessarily plan this today, so this was great. Came out to, I tried to visit at least in the spring and the fall to come out to El Paso and talk more about what Denise does with the ag program. At the end of the day, we try to make sure that we are doing a better job of networking with our other urban counties across the state. That's one of the things that we have to do a better job of. I know you mentioned a few moments ago about El Paso maybe not having the same recognition as some of our other urban counties across the state. I'm actually housed there in Houston, so I still hear a lot about what's taking place out here. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service is committed to the partnership that we have with our courts across the state and just welcome the opportunity to partner with our other groups that are local that have the same mission that our agency does as well. So thank you all for your hospitality. Weather is great. It's good to be back out here in El Paso today.
And thank you for, we welcome you, and thank you for everything that you do. Like I said, there's so many things that you're involved in, in rural areas, and farms, and agriculture. We're just very, very honored that you give us that attention. It goes way back, you know, so thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Also want to introduce Mark.
Sorry, I forgot to introduce Mark, our first Vice President, who will be our President next year, Mark Onval.
Oh, Mark, welcome. Thank you.
So just Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director, very thankful. And I just really want to thank our staff. Without our staff, we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to do this. So we're very thankful to our staff and to all our partners that help us to beautify, like we said, right, our gem. And so we're very thankful and grateful to everyone. And thank you for your continued support.
And having the trees, our master plan just took a leap, you know, catapulted into another area just because it's something that we hear a lot about, you know, the shades and the trees and just giving us that opportunity to, and I know the partnership will really come together. Commissioner Stout?
Well, thank you all once again for your work and for the donation of the trees. More trees, we can, we get the better. So we really appreciate your service to the community and your help and your working with Escarate and the Parks Department.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Please, sir.
Item number 4D, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing April 26, 2022, as Shared Parenting Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Well, this sort of adds to all the youth and everything that we've talked about. And of course, we mentioned the parents and their value to the community. So I have the pleasure and honor to introduce this resolution. Where El Paso childrens are the county's greatest asset and the vision of our future, and whereas federal statistics reflect that children raised by single parents accounts for more than half of teen suicides, juveniles in state-operated institutions, high school dropouts, children in chemical abuse centers, children in prison, children who exhibit behavioral disorders, and homelessness, and runaway children. And where shared parenting is an arrangement where fit parents who are separated or divorced are given equal decision-making abilities and equal parenting time. Whereas research indicates that children benefit greatly when they have a relationship with both parents if the parents are fit caregivers. And whereas declaring a county-wide day honoring shared parenting will encourage children's access to both parents. And whereas House Bill 528 was the nation's first shared parenting bill that was signed into law on April 26, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby proclaim April 26, 2022 as Shared Parenting Day. Sign this 25th day of April 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. We don't have anyone today. Unfortunately, they were not able to be here. But I just want to recognize very quickly individuals who have been very helpful. Anthony Brazil and NPO fundraising and Judge Marlene Gonzalez. These are judges that get very involved in making sure that parents have equal rights and that they come together to help us. Judge Lydia Ness Garcia, Judge Phyllis Gonzalez, Judge Yehard Lisa Gutierrez, Judge Lauda Strayton, Judge Karen Peltier, Judge James Lucas, Judge Jesús Rodriguez, and Diego Villa Senor. So thank you all for all the support that you give. And as I said, parenting is difficult enough, and so when you have some anomalies, it gets a little more difficult. So getting the parents to work together and have the equal rights is quite an important element. So thank you for allowing me to present this resolution.
Judge, can I?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to thank you for the resolution. I know firsthand what exactly you're talking about in the resolution. You know, I co-parent my son with his mother. And, you know, it is, I just think, really important, you know, to, I think, to impress upon the judges and the folks that work within the family courts and the family system to really try to make sure that both parents are involved, that, you know, that both parents have equal access to the kids. Because as it said in your resolution, it's just the difference that it makes to, for not just the child, but also for the parents. You know, it can be, divorce is very difficult. Separations are very difficult. But when you have the opportunity to make sure that both parents have access and equal access to the child, I think it's, I think it just makes a world of difference. And I can tell that, I can tell you that from my own personal experience with my son and the challenges that we've faced. So thank you for bringing light to this.
And thank you, Commissioner. That really helps when it's, you know, personal testimony like that. It's very helpful. Thank you. Caesar?
Thank you, sir. That concludes our resolutions for this morning. Onto item number six from Commissioners Court.
Caesar, we don't have anyone else on Public Comment, right?
No, sir. Yes, we have nobody else from Public Comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number six from Commissioners Court, pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 351.252, approve and adopt an El Paso County Commissioners Court order formally establishing the El Paso County Sexual Assault Response Team.
Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. This is a Commissioners Court order that's going to formally establish the El Paso County Sexual Assault Response Team. And I'm very proud to say, actually, that El Paso already had a SART, the Sexual Assault Response Team, even before it was mandated by SB 476 in the 87th Legislature, which required all 254 counties in Texas to have this response team. So El Paso was ahead of the game, ahead of its time, and we actually already had this team in place. Now that it's been mandated by the state, by the legislature, I'm thankful to Ms. Quintanilla from the Rio Grande Council of Governments who brought this issue forward because we felt that it should be memorialized in an actual court order. So the response team already existed, but now that it's being mandated by the state, we wanted to make sure that there was a record of its formal ratification by the Commissioners Court. So that's actually what we're going to be doing today. And if you'll indulge me, Judge, I'd actually like to read the order into the record just because I believe it has a lot of very important information, statistics, that our community needs to be aware of when it comes to sexual assault here in El Paso County. So I'll go ahead and read the court order into the record, and then we'll be hearing from Ms. Quintanilla. And also, I believe we have Elizabeth Gonzalez from the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence here with us today as well. So pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 351.252, on this 25th day of April 2022, the El Paso County Commissioners Court does hereby establish the Adult Sexual Assault Response Team by county order, which reads as follows. Whereas sexual violence is a serious issue impacting the public health and safety, and whereas, according to a statewide prevalence study, 6.3 million, or 33.2% of Texas adults have experienced some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas sexual assault continues to be a severely under-reported crime, only 9.2% of victims report their experience to the police, according to the Institute of Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault. And whereas in Texas in 2020, there were over 30,000 sexual assaults reported to law enforcement, and over 50,000 survivors sought services at a rape crisis center. And whereas sexual assault victims must live with the emotional and medical consequences of their assault, which are often chronic and severe, lifetime prevalence of post-traumatic stress disorder in women who are sexually assaulted is estimated to be 50%. And whereas, in their 2020 audit report to the Legislature on investigations and prosecutions of sexual assault statewide, the State Auditor's Office identified that only 32% of all reported sexual assaults in a five-year period resulted in an arrest. And whereas, in their 2020 audit report to the Legislature on investigations and prosecutions of sexual assault statewide, the State Auditor's Office noted a lack of reliable data on sexual assault cases, dispositions, and a lack of multidisciplinary responses to adults. And whereas, the 87th Texas Legislature has recognized the serious nature of this crime by passing SB 476 requiring all 254 counties in Texas to form a sexual assault response team. And whereas, even prior to the passage of SB 476, El Paso County established a sexual assault response team, which currently includes over 80 members from local law enforcement agencies, the District Attorney's Office, University Medical Center, Emergence Health Network, and multiple nonprofit organizations serving victims. And whereas, El Paso County, Texas recognizes that work must continue to be done at a societal and local level to reduce the incidence of sexual assault, hold offenders accountable, and to help heal victims. Whereas, the El Paso County Sexual Assault Response Team has appointed the following individuals to serve on the SART, which include the chief administrator or their designee of sexual assault programs that provide services for El Paso County, a prosecutor with jurisdiction over adult sexual assault cases in El Paso County, the sheriff of El Paso County or their designate, the chief or the chiefs designate of the largest population in the county, provided a municipality in the county has a municipal department, a sexual assault nurse examiner or forensic examiner that provides exams within El Paso County, a mental behavioral health provider within El Paso, and as deemed appropriate and upon appointment by the El Paso County Commissioners Court, other persons the presiding officer of the response team considers necessary for the operation of the response team or as recommended by the response team. Therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of El Paso County, Texas, that El Paso County is formally establishing the existence of the El Paso County Regional Sexual Assault Response Team by Commissioners Court order, which will abide by all of the requirements enumerated by the Texas Legislature in SB 476 on this 25th day of April 2022.
Second. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge Samaniego. Marisa Quintanilla with the Rio Grande Council of Governments Regional Services Director. Just want to give you a background in regards to how we got here with SB 476, how the Council of Governments became involved in this initiative. As Commissioner Olgin had stated, effective September 1 of 2021, 254 counties were required to go ahead and formalize their SART programs. Within our COG region, as you know, we cover from Doñan all the way to Brewster County, two of our counties, Hetsbath and Culberson, did not have an established SART team. So basically, through the Governor's Office and through our association jurisdictions and agencies, victim services agencies, were encouraged to partner up with their councils of governments to be able to go ahead and make these establishments. With that, we went ahead and partnered up with the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence, our executive director with Ms. Sandra Garcia, who is here with us, and as well as Jasmine, who oversees the program, to go ahead and get that initiated for Hetsbath and Culberson County. But then in reading more into what the requirements were, even though El Paso County already had a SART team, I believe since 2015, Jasmine? And we needed to go ahead and ratify the formation because now there's new requirements that are going to have to be here to with all the SART teams throughout Texas. And so I believe that behind your agenda item, you do have an informational sheet that talks about the requirements to include reporting to you all in terms of those stats every other year or at the end of the year and what the progress is, and basically keeping minutes and protocols and inter-local agreements with the other agencies. So that's how we're here, and I really appreciate you all taking the time to ratify the formation of the El Paso County SART team. But I'll lean on Jasmine to give a little bit of overview on the SART program.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. Thank you so much for having us today and Commissioner Olgin for helping us with this resolution. As Marisa and Commissioner Olgin mentioned, right, we did have an established SART. This resolution does help us formalize that. The El Paso community is a great community. We are very happy to continue the collaboration with the local agencies and different professionals, like was mentioned previously, you know, our sexual assault nurse examiners, the District Attorney's Office, local law enforcement, from the local, you know, throughout the county. So we have El Paso Police Departments, Socorro Police Departments, Sheriff's Office. So we're very, very fortunate, and we want to continue this work that we're doing, very important work. And with this resolution, you know, we can also make sure that we are putting in place trauma-informed practices, you know, to help and promote the healing of survivors that do come forward. As we know, you know, it is a very low percentage of, like Commissioner Olgin read earlier, right, that actually come forward and report. So we want to make sure that we can promote the healing and help them through the process that they go through and ultimately also hold offenders accountable. So we're very excited to continue this work and very grateful for your support.
Thank you. Would you like to? Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. So again, just to reiterate, I think that the center, along with all its community partners, have worked really hard to continue these relationships. As you can imagine, in these smaller communities, our biggest concern is that everyone knows everyone, right? So you know when some things happened. You everyone, right? So you know when something's happened. You feel like this different level of embarrassment and shame oftentimes, don't want to come forward, don't want to go to the hospital, don't want to reach out. And so the hopes is that with this, we've always been in these communities, obvious Hetsbath and Culberson are part of our area that we provide services to, but also to let them know that they can access services, maybe not even just in their community, but also branch out and come over to El Paso when needed, to be able to safely access some of those services. And the only way we can do that is to obviously build these different community relationships with our partners there. We connect with them and ensure that they understand that there is that process that does provide confidentiality for our survivors throughout their process at wherever they are in that process. Because we do feel that obviously these numbers can definitely improve. We'd love to say that there isn't an issue, but there's always an issue when it comes to domestic violence and sexual assault. And so our foremost interest is to ensure that those individuals that need the services and need the support are getting that service and support to help them through their journey.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do over and above today, but the COG does so many. I, I just want to, we're talking about it in, in our legal orientation this morning, and so much is needed. I was a rape crisis counselor back in the days for El Paso and New Mexico, and a lot has changed and a lot has remained the same. And one of the things that, it's the type of topic that can be pushed away real quickly, and we forget about it. It has to stay at the forefront. It has to because the hesitation to, to talk about it, to report it is still there, especially now, you know, we know we have the, the layer, as I keep saying, we have a layer of the pandemic on top of anything that, that was wrong and things that we're addressing. You have the pandemic, and then it gets a little more difficult. So I thank you because it's, having worked in that area, it's almost like, like, people want it not to exist, or when it happens, let's just forget that it happened, and we'll, we'll, we'll figure out how to do it some different way. And that's so hard. You have to keep pulling it out and putting it in the forefront. So I thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for working on that. It's such an important situation that, that really needs this kind of focus.
And actually, if I may add to that, and that's the reason why SB 476 came to the forefront, is because other assaults were taking precedence versus adult assaults, basically. You know, we were talking more about child sex trafficking, we're talking more about child abuse, we're talking about more, and not give the attention to adult sexual assaults. And that's what made this, through our TASA Association in Texas, made this as a forefront to be able to say, we need to specifically talk about adult sexual assaults.
Thank you. And Commissioner Leon, I know you've been very involved with the COG in, in this, as in law enforcement, I'm sure.
Yes, I'm very glad to. Thank you, Judge. I'm very glad to see this. And I can tell you from experience, in my own opinion, for every sexual assault that's reported, there probably is many as 10 that go unreported. So thank you very much for the, for the recognition.
Thank you. Commissioner Ogilvy?
No, I just wanted to thank Marisa for all of her work on this issue, and then, of course, thank all of our community partners, the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence, our DA, our sheriff, all of our law enforcement offices, UMC, EHN, for all of the tremendous work that they do on behalf of victims. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you.
Item number seven from County Administration, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Betsy?
Good afternoon, or good morning, Judge Commissioners. We will start with updates with you, County Judge.
None at all, except, you know, we've been hearing a lot in some real concern and alarming situation in China and the restrictions. And, and it's not that we don't want people to be alarmed, but we know we're better equipped. You know, it doesn't come, we saw the Omni-Virus come in and leave us because people were vaccinated. So just want to encourage people talking about maybe not doing the booster. Also heard some people saying, well, I only took the first one. That's a great example. They took Pfizer, the first one, but not the second one. And people, you know, maybe consider it as like Johnson &amp; Johnson, and not, don't get it too complicated. I mean, in your mind, if what you took or didn't take, or getting that booster and keeping us protected is what, how we keep it from getting traction. And so we thank you for anything that you could do to promote, get that booster. It's very available. And so this one, this time, it's not a, it's more not inconvenient or difficult, but just get the booster and follow the science, as we say. So thank you, Betsy.
Leon?
No new information?
Stout? Commissioner Robinson? Ogilvy? No. Thank you all. That concludes our update for this item today.
Thank you, Betsy.
We'll take no further action on item number seven. Item number eight, American Rescue Plan. ARP Project Number 1010, receive a presentation from Dig Deep regarding a potential collaboration and partnership to provide first-time water and wastewater service to underserved communities in El Paso County. Further discuss and take appropriate action regarding formally evaluating and developing a partnership with Dig Deep.
Only Judge Commissioners, I'll settle on the Osip County Administration. This item before you this morning is a proposed partnership between the county and Dig Deep, a nonprofit organization committed to helping expand access to water and wastewater services for residents across the country. And however, they have approached the county about a potential partnership, and we'd like to present some more information onto the court this morning. I'm joined this morning by Ms. Catherine Lucero with Dig Deep virtually, who will be able to discuss a little bit about the agency's proposal and then take any questions that the court may have that are specifically to them. But as you all are aware, last week, Dig Deep sent over a letter formally as a letter of intent to the county recognizing their will to partner with the county in the amount of, in the amount of approximately $5 million to help go into funding different projects together. And if, we can go to the next slide on the presentation, they specifically outlined a commitment of $2 million in this calendar year in 2022, and then another $3 million next year. Specifically, the conversations that we have had with Dig Deep to date have been, have revolved around five project areas, three of which are currently under design under the ARPA funds that have been set aside by the Commissioners' Court, and those would be Laura E. Lundy in the Upper Valley on the West Side Serene Acres as well, and then Tierra de Oro on the far east portion of El Paso County. And then the other two project areas, Turf Estates was identified as an alternate project by the Commissioners' Court last year. This is in the event that funds were left over at the, of the ARPA dollars. This project is shovel-ready and ready to go and would be developed in partnership with El Paso Water. We also submitted this project to Congresswoman Escobar's call for community project funding projects. Hillcrest Estates, which is a first-time water service project, this is to the immediate east of Hillcrest Center, which the court is aware, we are currently managing a USDA and EPA-funded first-time water project in that area. With the development pattern in the area, that project is well-positioned to be a low-hanging fruit that we might take advantage of the investment in infrastructure that's being made there, not only by the county, but also by private development, to actually help deliver first-time water to more residents in that specific area. Effectively, what Dig Deep is proposing to do is to offset some existing program costs that the county has within our ARPA portfolio to the tune of about $5 million, which would then give us, as an agency, the opportunity to have new project capacity financially, and we would then be able to begin some of this additional activity, specifically in Turf Estates and in Hillcrest Estates. Next slide, please. This is just a screenshot from the spreadsheet that shows the dollar amounts of the projects that Dig Deep is looking to partner with the county. Again, the intent would be to offset these costs in ARPA funding and then free up that ARPA funding to go toward other project development costs in Turf Estates and in Hillcrest Estates. Next slide, please. Here's a more detailed financial breakdown of what that looks like. As you can see, we are under budget. We wouldn't have enough to do all of it, but we would have enough to get some of the work started in Turf Estates and in Hillcrest Center, or Hillcrest Estates, excuse me. But the, so effectively, we're looking at just about $5 million on the ARPA projects. And then the other project areas, eight and a half million. That $5.3 million figure for the first-time water in Hillcrest, that might actually come down substantially because, again, of the development patterns that have taken place in the area, the fact that the county is making investments in first-time water service in, on Hillcrest off of Saragossa, and is leaving out a portion, the, the one that we're discussing this morning. There's potential for that to help reduce the cost, as well as private development that is happening to the, what, to the east of Hillcrest. There's a large-scale development that's going in there by one of the developers that we presented to the court with respect to a public improvement district on, along Edgemere, right in between the city limits and Montana Vista, as we know it today. So once that area is fully developed, there'll be additional water infrastructure in place that, again, should help to reduce some of these costs and might actually give us an idea of how much funding we would need for, to complete that project. At the minimum, if we're not able to proceed with the full project, we would still have the ability to start the design and have a project that becomes shovel-ready and increasingly competitive for future funding opportunities, perhaps through the Congresswoman's call for projects, perhaps through funding agencies such as USDA, Texas Water Development Board, or the Environmental Protection Agency, NAD Bank. So we feel it's a good partnership to explore because it gives us the opportunity to really make more investments in water and sewer because of the investment and partnership of Dig Deep. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. The requested action this morning is to, and I have it here, want to make sure that I read it into the record appropriately, is to approve and authorize the county judge to submit a letter to Dig Deep accepting the proposal to collaborate on providing first-time critical community infrastructure to colonias across El Paso County. A memorandum of understanding with Dig Deep would then be brought back to the court for consideration, and further direct staff to begin drafting the technical and legal documents necessary to formalize this working agreement with Dig Deep. That concludes my presentation. Again, Ms. Lucero from Dig Deep is available, and we're happy to take any questions that the court may have. Perhaps let Ms. Lucero say a few words on behalf of, of the organization.
Absolutely. We'd love to hear that, Ms. Lucero, and thank you for a great partnership, but we'd love to hear from you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First, I want to thank the staff, Jose Landeros and Monsorros Raj, for, for putting a lot of time and effort and having patience with us over the past few months to, to come to this place where we are today, to be able to, to hopefully come to some type of partnership. We've already been working with Commissioner Ogilvy's office on Cochran, and as, as you all approved to do some of the paving for that first-time water project. And so we've already established somewhat of a foundational partnership. Dig Deep is committed to El Paso County, is committed to the colonias here in El Paso County. Once we, if we're able to continue with the partnership and solidify it today, if Hillcrest does get to the point where we do design, where design is, is going to be something that the county pursues, Dig Deep is committed to, to securing funds for, for construction. So this is something that we want ongoing, long-term. We're committed to the people and the colonias. And in fact, next week, I would like to invite you all, we're going to, through a partnership with Kaboom and Ayuda, we're going to be building a playground there in Cochran, and we're going to also have a groundbreaking on Saturday. So May 4 through Saturday, we're going to build the playground and then do a groundbreaking. So I will send you out emails. You're all invited to come help with the work of building the playground, or you can join us for the groundbreaking. Either way, we would love to see you there. This partnership is essential.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for the invitation. Jose?
Ms. Lucero, Judge, if there's any questions the court have, would you recommend proceeding with this? Effectively, maybe I should have led with this. The proposal is to accept and start working on acceptance of five, to start working on accepting $5 million of nonprofit funding into the county to allow us to expand the work that we've already begun in terms of wastewater and sewer to serve more residents, something that is very much in alignment with the vision and direction that the court has set, not only in terms of using your American Rescue Plan Act funding, but also within your strategic plan. So we very much feel this is in alignment with the values of the Commissioners' Court, and we're asking for your favorable consideration this morning.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Judge, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Leon?
Thank you very much, Judge Commissioners. And Jose, thank you for bringing this forward. And Ms. Lucero, thank you so much for being so helpful in this endeavor. And she, in fact, has been so helpful to my office, to the county for the past many, many years. And now that Hillcrest Estates and Turf Estates is part of, of my precinct, I'm really glad to see this because you've got families out there, they're paying as much as $200 a month for water that they have to truck in. There's more than about 300 people that live in that area. And, and if you look at a place like Turf Estates, it's really a donut that people to the left, to the right, north, south, have sewer service, but they have not for so many years. And we touched on this last week, that it's so important that things that we take for granted, like running water, sewer service, and so many other utilities that are not available to these folks out there as easily as they are to us. So I'm very thankful to Dig Deep and Ms. Lucero for always being willing to assist the county. So thank you very much, and I'm so glad that we will be moving forward, well, hopefully, we'll be moving forward with, with this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Lucero, this is so much part of the puzzle. When I just started three and a half years ago, we could barely chip away at it. And while we're chipping away, it got worse, and we could never get ahead of ourselves. So as we see the funding and your programs, I think we're beginning to believe and trust that, that we can actually accomplish and have everyone in the county be in the same situation and not have to worry that they live in a place where, where they have differences in, in the quality of life. So this is a great program for great, you know, people waiting for this to happen. Thank you, Mrs. Lucero.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners and Judge. We welcome the partnership.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose.
Judge Commissioners.
Thank you.
Caesar? Item number nine, auditor. Pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 114.025, the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is hereby submitted for your acceptance. This report is located on the Internet at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.epcounty.com/auditor/p publications slash acfr dot htm. We do have a request from the county auditor to postpone this item for one week.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon has stepped out of the meeting. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 114.023, 114.024, 114.025, and 114.026, please accept the attached presentation and the interim financial report for the month ended March 31, 2022. The interim financial report is located on the Internet at HTTP colon forward slash forward slash www.epcounty.com/ forward slash www.epcounty.com/auditor/p publications/ monthlyreports dot htm.
Good morning, Commissioners. Edward Dion, county auditor. This is the unannated interim financial report for the fiscal month six, ending March 31st. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you. The executive financial summary, this is just a summary of all funds and the general fund, revenues, expenditures for the month, year-to-date, and then the percentage expended year-to-date. Next slide, please. This is the condensed financial report for March that's published in the Sunday paper prior to the presentation, shows budgeted funds, fund balance, revised budget year-to-date, and then year-to-date expenditures, encumbrances, requisitions, and then the year-to-date available balance for budgeted funds and for multi-year funds. Next slide, please. Summary of revenues by fund for fiscal month six. As you can see, the month-to-date actuals are $47.2 million, the year-to-date 342.5 million. The slide represents revenues collected and broken down by fund type. Next slide, please. General fund revenues by source. The breakdown here is the comparison between FY '21 and FY '22. So, you can see the actual variances from year to year, collected by fund type. The general fund collections have increased compared to the same time last year. As you can see, there's an overall variance of 17.8 million, but the overall favorable variance were actually 18.1 million, and the unfavorable variances were 321.9,000, a net of 17.8, which equates to an increase over prior year. The majority of these categories, as I said, were favorable, except for two areas, fines and forfeits and other financing sources. One of the major areas of change was the state motor vehicle sales tax. We typically received that a little bit later in the fiscal year. Last year, we received it in May, so we're two months early, and we got an increase from the prior year, 6.9 million, an increase of 1.4 million, or 26.4% over FY '21. The next major increase was sales tax, 4.3 million, or 17.8%. On April 8th, just talking about fiscal month seven, we got our sixth sales tax payment. It was $5 million, or 18.35% over the amount received the same time last year, and brings the sales tax increase to 5.1 million, or 17.88%. Property taxes, we show an increase of about 2.9 million. Charges for services, these are the same as I expressed in my last monthly update. We've got prisoner, federal prisoner increase of about 393,000. County clerk is up 383,000. County clerk food concessions, an increase of 302, that's 100% over the prior year. County clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, county tax collection fees increased by 300,000. Green fees are up 189,000. Coliseum rental, an increase of 183. Phone commissions for internet and tablets, increase of 144,000. Constables up 140, and golf cart fees up 132. So, as you can see, these major areas that previously were down have continued to see increases. State mixed beverage has increased by $820,000. Other increases, decreases, the unfavorable was from a decrease of 234,000 for fines. The majority of that was just regular fines and forfeits. Council of judges, the amount was 13,000. And then fines and forfeits combined by the sum of JPs decreased of 13,000. And county attorney forfeitures decreased 41,000, and judgments and settlements were down about 197,000. So, that's most likely a timing difference because it doesn't happen every year. Other financing sources were down about 88,000. The excess grant match. Next slide, please. This is just the budget actual comparison, just shows you the amount spent for the month and how much is remaining, over 50% through the year, and we have a 79.14% remaining. Next slide, please. This is just a graphic depiction of taxes, revenues overall for the year. It shows the FY '06 taxes comprised about 92.25% of revenues received, and ad valorem taxes were about 84.5%. Next slide, please. This is the three-year comparison of the major revenues to the county. As you can see, overall, the revenues have been increasing from year to year, showing property taxes and sales taxes. The increases are continuing to grow. As I've stated in the past, the percentages may show that they're slightly down, but the budgets have grown pretty significantly. Therefore, the percentage is less, but the amount collected is still greater. Next slide, please. This is sales tax, sales and use tax, just shows you the areas of the increase that continue. Accommodation and food services shows quite a bit of an increase compared to the other categories. Retail trade increased by 162,000, or 7.21%. Accommodations and food services grew by 117,000, 19.33%. Wholesale trade up about 178,000, or 64.55%. Next slide, please. Expenditures, this is just a summary expenditures by fund, all broken down by fund. For the month of March, general fund recorded expenses of 40 million and year-to-date of 151 million. Next slide, please. This is the expenditures broken down by function. And I'll just note that it excludes 19 million designated for unforeseen emergencies. Next slide, please. This is the comparison of actuals to actuals for the general fund. Goes up for the year-to-date through March, 151.3 million versus 142.1 of the prior year, 9.2 million increase over the prior year, or 6.51% increase. Some of the increases, the general government, grew by 11.6 million. A major portion of that was 5.2 million transferred to the road and bridge fund, mainly due to timing. There was a transfer in the prior year, which occurred in fiscal month 10, and the small capital, the one penny transfer, increased by 2.4 million. Public works, we had about 2.2 million increase. Capital vehicles increased by 1.8 million, and the capital out stormwater improvement increased by 336,000. Public safety decreased by 423,000. We had administration of justice decreased by 869,000. Public defender increased by 607. District attorney decreased by 1.4 million. Resource development decreased by 3.5 million, and that was mainly due to contract services general, a decrease due to the faster program last year, which was not a recurring expenditure this year. Next slide, please. This chart breaks down the expenditures by function of government. Public safety accounted for 38.4% of year-to-date expenses. General government, 34.05. Administration of Justice, 21.20, and the remaining 9.61 for other functions. Next slide, please. This is my latest projection of fund balance. As I indicated to you previously, the FY '21 fund balance is just a little bit over 96, it's rounding here to 97. And I, we didn't meet with Budget and Fiscal Policy on the revenue and the expenditure projections through the end of the fiscal year, and my projection currently is 84 million. I have not met with them on what their projection is for the fund balance, but that's subject to change, and we'll be meeting on a monthly basis as we do our projections every time we close the fiscal month, as we go through the budget process. Next slide, please. With that, if anybody has any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Leon?
Mr. Dion, good morning, thank you. If you can go back to that last slide you had, that one right there.
The fund balance?
Yes. If you look at 2022, that big spike, then in '23, it looks like the expenditures sort of go down and it evens out. What is the reason for that spike?
I guess the triangle, that basically is showing a budget. Okay, that's the budget growth, and I'm not sure where the budget's going to grow, but the budget did spike in '22. And for the most part, expenditures are growing into the future. I try to cap it, anything after fiscal year '22, I would say, I continually say, until we have the five-year forecast that we actually are controlling the expenditures and the revenues, those lines that go past '22, I wouldn't really rely on those. But we, the goal is to try to make sure expenditures are in alignment with revenues. And we do see some significant revenues that are bringing those lines closer together, one of those being sales tax. We increased our revenue estimate to $60 million, and at this point, we are continuing to get additional revenues coming in, and that revenue may end up coming in in excess of $65 to $68 million for the year. And so, my projection includes those optimistic observations, which hopefully will hold true.
And thank you. But if you remember, some months, maybe a couple of years back, the, if you can go back to the, my memory's not that good, yeah. If you remember, we had it at maybe '21, '22, where those projections were even less than what I'm seeing now. I guess as they go into reality, it sort of evens out.
Yes, everything prior to '22 is historical actuals. That is what, in fact, has occurred. You can see how the budgets have grown really high, that dotted line at the very top, that's how much has been budgeted versus how much has been spent. So, the gap that's in between that is for projects that have typically have rolled over from one fiscal year to the other.
Okay.
And I think budget and fiscal policy could probably answer that area better than I could.
And I see that your projections for the future are very, very conservative. Would you agree with that?
I will say they're conservative to a limit. I do project growth in property values as we get new values added to the rolls. We've had that communication, and I think my estimates are not that conservative because every year end, what we do is we look at the revenue estimates versus the projected estimates to see if there's a big gap. And I think for the last couple of years, we've had, we've had it within a few percentage points. So, I would consider that not being ultra-conservative.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dion.
Thank you. Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Dion, so the fund balance of the nearly 97 million for 2021, is that final? Is that our final number, or is that still being adjusted?
My understanding, that will not, it's 90, it's really like 96. It's a little less than 97. But that number will not change, to my knowledge. We're at the point now where we're just wrapping up the reports, getting the auditors to finish their review, and finalizing our presentation for the Commissioners' Court for next Monday.
Okay, so for all practical purposes, the 96 million is our final number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stout, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dion. I had a question. So, the projections that, moving forward, these are taking into account that the tax rate is, stays the same, at the same level, or that it goes down to an effective rate? Or does it take into account changes in, possible changes in tax rate? Because I know that property values are going up again this year, and there may, you know, there may be room for us to reduce the tax rate to cut into some of the, you know, to offset some of that increase, you know? I think that's something that we've talked about in strategic planning, and I think it's something that we need to look at doing to, because the property values went up again this year, just like we did last year, we reduced the tax rate some to try to offset some of that, and I think we need to work towards that again. So, these projections don't take, would not take that into account, correct?
Yes, let me just qualify that just a little bit. I have come to an agreement with Budget and Fiscal Policy on taxes. That's our major, that's our major revenue source for ad valorem property taxes. So, I do rely on the truth and taxation calculation for the revenues at one point in time until you make an adjustment by changing the tax rate. So, whatever the tax rate was for '22, I am carrying that forward into the future years, except every year thereafter, I add 2%. And every subsequent year is compounded, so it's 2%, 4%, 6%. So, I am factoring that growth for new values added to the rolls, which are truly new revenues to you. So, I'm given the benefit of the doubt. I'm not being ultra-conservative because that's a fact, that's a reality, and we've seen it, and the history shows. And same thing with the sales tax. We've had unprecedented gains in sales tax, and we have now, I have now changed my estimate, and I have to be cautious here because it's gone up so drastically, I want to make sure that we don't over-project. But we really rely on a budget from one year to the next, so we'll be looking at it month to month. But I think the projection does show the revenue growth in our major revenue sources. Okay? I don't, I don't, I see there are some areas in a non-tax area where the revenues have still, they have, there's room for recovery, but we're making great strides in those areas too. So, I would say, I would say that I am factoring in growth into the future, and like I say, Budget and Fiscal Policy, if they disagree with me, that I think I'm being ultra-conservative, I think they'll chime in here. But I think, I think we have, we're on the same page most of the time, and I think we do a good job projecting those revenues to what they realistically would be, absent the action of the court to make maybe a property tax proposal to increase taxes.
Right.
So, I have not factored in increases in taxes because that's your call, not the auditor.
Right, right. So, I just wanted to make it clear, so you're projecting that 2% increase year-over-year because we're adding more properties to the rolls?
New.
New properties to the rolls, it's not necessarily because of the increase in valuations that CAD has been assessing over the last, over the last couple of years.
New roles, new property that was not previously on the rolls.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon.
I'm listening.
Good morning, still.
Sales tax is doing very well.
Yes, it is.
Do you, how do you, what do you attribute it to, and do you see the trend continuing?
The major change, there was a, there was a change in the law nationwide that now anybody purchasing items online gets taxed. If you're in Texas and you're buying items online, the Texas sales tax is being charged now where it previously was not. So, all of these sales are now generating additional revenues to Texas and all other states that have a sales tax. And that's, and it's basically, you know, people are spending more money online rather than going shopping locally, but we're getting the benefit of that. And, you know, the big issue was where, with COVID, there were a lot of people, they had savings because they're teleworking, they're not spending it on gas, but now they're spending it on other items that they need to purchase, and we're getting those sales tax and we're reaping the benefits, and so are other communities. So, spending habits have changed, but I'm just thinking at some point down the road, it has to level off or plateau, and I'm not sure exactly where that point is because we have just seen month after month after month of growth, and we're seeing it ratchet down a little bit, but it's still far above what we've ever experienced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions? If not, thank you. Edward, really great presentation, and we thank you for your time.
I move to accept. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, I just want to make, thank you, Edward. I just wanted to make a comment. When we talked about the auto sales tax and the increase that we've been seeing, you may recall that we proposed a policy to the court a couple of years ago, and it's a good thing you all adopted because that same percentage increase we see in the revenue, we will now see reinvested into our road program. revenue, we will now see reinvested into our road program.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we're going to need it based on what we're seeing in the cost and just the need to keep up with our county roads. So I want to remind the court of that and tie it to this revenue report.
Yeah, great timing. Thank you.
Are you talking about the $10 additional?
No, sir. I'm talking about the auto sales tax.
Wow.
And that increase that was on Mr. Deon's report, that it showed a significant increase. And Wally shared with me that that'll equate to about a $1.2 million increase on our expenditure side in this coming budget, being reinvested back into our roads. Because autos are what impact our roads. We proposed that to the court a couple of years ago. And you all adopted it as a financial policy. And so it really does give us an ongoing and really a proactive, smart way of investing based on our revenue.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Item number 11 from information technology. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the software-as-a-service agreement between the County of El Paso and Tyler Technologies. Funding in the amount of $290,933 is available in CP, CP County Capital 12 Equipment and CP, CP Capital 12 Miscellaneous. Further approve the reallocation of funding from CP, CP Capital 12 Miscellaneous to CP, CP County Capital 12 Equipment. Contract number 2022-0188.
Welcome, Chris.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Chris Stathis, your chief information officer. The item, this item is before you to request authorization to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies for the provision and use of its hosted pre-trial management services. The agreement will allow ITD and its partner to partner with the criminal justice department to implement an electronic system to streamline its processes, improve data collection, and enable data-driven decision-making in our pre-trial department. The implementation of this system directly supports the court's goals of leading justice reform and optimizing internal processes. The CJC department and I are available to answer any questions you might have, and we recommend approval as written.
Yeah, great addition. Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. As we're trying to streamline a little bit and we've got backlog and everything else, this is very much needed. The technology, I hope, carries us back into normal. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Item number 12 from Public Works. We do have a correction to read in from the county attorney's office for this item as well. This item should read, "Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of El Paso County, Texas, Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation, taxable series 2022, in the principal amount of $20,718,000, and awarding the sale of such certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board. Further, discuss and take appropriate action regarding adoption of a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a grant agreement, Flood Infrastructure Fund, with the Texas Water Development Board, and resolving other matters relating to the subject. Contract number 2022-0310."
Welcome, Jose.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. This item before you is related to the county's second major flood infrastructure fund project. This is a $34 million project located in east El Paso County, south of Eastlake and I-10, within the city of Socorro, that has a grant and a loan component to it from the Texas Water Development Board. As I mentioned, it's a $34 million project, approximately $20.7 million of which are related to low-interest loans, which this item authorizes the county to now move forward with the issuance of the debt necessary to facilitate that zero-interest loan. The bonds will be purchased by the Texas Water Development Board, and we will have an interest rate of zero. So we are asking for the court's authorization to proceed with this. The court has taken action on this item previously from late last year when we were moving forward with the application to in January, this award being made officially by Texas Water Development Board. We've been, over the past two months, worked to make sure all the legal and financial agreements are in place. And so very much want to thank all of the county staff who've worked on this from budget and fiscal policy, county attorney's office, county auditor's office, as well as Mr. Rudy Segura, our bond counsel, and Mr. Brad Engs with Steeple, our financial advisor. Everyone has come together to move these projects along. And this is a great opportunity for the county. This is the single largest project that the Water Development Board has awarded across the entire state. And so we're glad that it's here because I think we all recognize how great the need is within our community. With that, we are asking for the court's authorization to move forward with this item of approval and authorization. And I'm available to take any questions the court may have, as well as Mr. Engs with Steeple, our financial advisor.
Brad, do you want to include some of your comments? You're muted.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
This is Brad Engs with Steeple. I serve as the county's financial advisor. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jose did a great job of summarizing this. This is a great opportunity for the county, both in terms of the grant funds that will come with this project, more than $13 million of grant funds, and then a zero-interest rate on the loan as well. This has been structured in a way to make sure that it does not increase your tax rate, and it's been done to conform with the Water Development Board loan program and their requirements. Unfortunately, Mr. Segura had to step off, but I have been able to visit with him as well. And he wanted to share that he did work with Mr. Sosa's office to make sure that this loan and all the details are in order on the legal side of things.
Thank you. And our best to Rudy and all of his help as well. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, County Judge, Commissioners. Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. I do have some proposed language for you unless you had additional questions or comments for your, for the court's record. So the item would be to adopt an order authorizing the issuance of El Paso County, Texas, Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation, taxable series 2022, in the principal amount of $20,718,000, and awarding the sale of such certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board. Further, adopt a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a grant agreement, Flood Infrastructure Fund, with the Texas Water Development Board, and resolving other matters relating to the subject.
Excellent. Move to approve?
Second.
This is Rudy Segura. Can y'all hear me?
Oh, Rudy, how are you?
I am here. Good, good, good. About to walk into another meeting. I apologize for interrupting, but there's been some chatter this morning about possibly doing additional financing. As y'all know, we have a program with USDA. And so I would just ask that that motion be made, but to designate the series as 2022A. And that's my only, my only comment is that since there may be additional series later on down the year, like in December, we would ask that this be designated 2022A.
Thank you. Christina?
Yes, so will we just add that to the motion that I just read? We don't need to redo the first or the-
Thank you.
First and the second. We'll just add that, taxable series 2022A.
Good timing, Rudy. And Mr. Sosa, thank you so much for your help on this matter as well and the rest of the legal team. Thank you.
Move to approve that motion, or I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by the judge and Commissioner Olgin. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day. Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Rudy.
Just have a good day.
Item number 13. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the contract between owner and contractor with Allied Paving for the construction of a project identified as fiscal year '22 paving program for the County of El Paso, bid number 22-012, in the amount of $2,489,000. Funding is available in special revenue, road and bridge, road resurfacing. Contract number 2022-0281.
Thank you. Welcome, Fernie.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Fernie Adonis with Infrastructure Services Department. Today, we are requesting for the court to authorize a judge to sign and execute the contract between Allied Paving and the county to perform FY '22 paving program as described under the bid number 22-012. I can answer any questions or concerns if you have at this time. If not, we recommend the approval of this contract.
Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Eric, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Judge, it's 12:04. Would you like to recess for afternoon break? Or would you like to finish the agenda off?
We're too close to take a break, so I think, let's go ahead and finish executive and we'll be, I think we'll be complete.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Commissioners' court will now recess into executive session to discuss item number 14A and 14B. First move to Texas Government Code Section 551.087. Commissioners' court will reconvene to take official action.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is $500, the second is $2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals, and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. What's up, baby? So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Outlook everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, man, it is an issue of dogs being loose at large, so you could tie them up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter because he was staying loose at large for not being restrained.
In all due some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
Running in the valley and past the missions, what else could you ask for?
Welcome, brothers, welcome.
At the county, we work so hard to really promote the Mission Trail. We know what an absolute treasure it is, how historic it is. And so many people don't really know what's here in the Mission Valley. So this is a great way to spotlight our historic treasures, our historic buildings.
Yeah, it was a really cool course. It was beautiful. I liked the mountains in the background and yeah, cool things to look at.
I noticed a few of those signs and I also actually really appreciated that. That also goes into the scenery. That also goes into the scenery of it, I think, is to see all that history. And that's kind of what people really appreciate in marathons. I mean, I'm from DC. The races, we run up there, they make an effort to go through the monuments and all that. So it's good to see El Paso trying to do the same thing with their history.
We had people from Germany, England, of course, Mexico, and I believe somebody from France, and then from 38 different states come and visit us this year.
There are folks here from all over the country. This is a qualifier for the Boston Marathon. It's a huge event, huge event, and I'm just incredibly proud that we're going to get to show off the Mission Valley to all of these folks.
I hope we do it again. I'm sure that we will, you know, based on what we get, feedback we get from the runners, that I'm sure we'll be...
We're ready, Sosa. Are you ready? Ready?
Standby. We're waiting for ASL interpreters. Just a second. They're on their way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Commissioners, court has reconvened into regular open session. Item number 15. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding a Chapter 381 agreement with Rocco Developers LLC. Contract number 2021-0772.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Michael Hernandez with the Economic Development Department. The item before you is a proposed agreement between El Paso County and Rocco Developers that lays out a term of support on real and personal property rebate on taxes over a five-year term. That gets us to at about $90,046 as a rebate total. We ask for your consideration to approve this agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Commissioner Alguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Michael, thank you for expediting and mitigating this due to the increasing construction costs. I'm glad it's moving forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes all the items on our agenda today, Judge.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, today. I think that we really honored and recognize our youth from the community, and what an exceptional opportunity to see so many young people in our courtroom here. So quite in favor of what we'd like to do here. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your support, and we appreciate it and hope everybody has a great week. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:17 PM.
I don't know how that's happening.